Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for the School of Town of Speedway for November 13th. We are working from a 13-item agenda. The first item is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 9th. Con?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the meeting of October 9th, 2018.
Thank you. Thank you, Con. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
I start grading tomorrow. Next month from now, it'll be entirely different.
Man, you can read.
Mine looks good tonight.
Thank you. Item number two, set date and time for annual retreat.
Recommendation is to advertise a school board meeting, a working session, in this room for 1:00 PM on Tuesday, December 11th, 2017, essentially from 1:00 PM until 6:30 PM. It becomes a meeting when three of you arrive, and it's a working session, means you can't make any decisions, anything you do, you'd have to take public action on. This has been our practice for, I think, the last half dozen years. So I'd recommend you set the meeting time as 1:00 PM and location this room.
I move that we set December 11th at 1:00 PM for our annual retreat and work session in the boardroom.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item number three, approve schedule of the 2019 school board meetings.
And I recommend that you approve the schedule that continues, as has been practiced for quite some time, second Tuesday of the month, 7:30 PM in this location. This schedule corresponds with all previous schedules. Absent, we don't need a second meeting in August because we're no longer required by state law on the two weeks board advertisement for the hearing on capital projects. It's simply part of the bigger budget. So I recommend you adopt this schedule.
I'll move we adopt the schedule for the 2019 school board meetings as presented.
Thank you, Laura. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item number four, present the concept regarding the partnership with Praxair.
And I'm pleased to welcome both Eric Roseborough and Luke Zartman, who have brought this concept forward, and I believe we have a guest here from Praxair. So, gentlemen, the floor is yours. Tell us about this.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us some time here to share an exciting opportunity that we have been approached with Praxair. Actually, I'm going to make you come stand up here as well and say a few words here as soon as Eric gets done, and I'm going to save my remarks for -- no, come on up, come on. Don't be shy. I'll save my remarks for the end because the real stars are here behind me. This started, Praxair had reached out to Eric Roseborough and had an idea and came over, and I think they found very quickly that his enthusiasm easily matched theirs in terms of what he was already doing back in our tech ed program and kind of the vision that they had with this partnership. And so with that said, I'm going to turn it over to them. They can give you the details, and then I'll add a few closing remarks.
Brief kind of overview of what the program is and what or how it would relate to what we do is right now, I teach six different CTE courses, and we also offer --
Career Technical Education. They always use acronyms.
I was just going to ask.
As well as Mr. Owens teaching for Project Lead the Way courses where this could fit in multiple ways. In just the six courses that I teach alone, I've identified at least 71 state standards where a partnership with them could be applicable, whether it be with the hands-on, the design, the partnership with having engineers potentially speak, or even site visits. All goes into the career exploration, design process, functionality of what we try to accomplish in these classes. So that's why we think it's a good idea. The courses that I teach where it would fit would be Introduction to Construction, Introduction to Transportation, and then we have three dual credit classes through Ivy Tech, which are three levels of advanced manufacturing, which is essentially the industry that they are heavily involved in, and then Architectural Drafting and Design. So that, those will be the courses that I teach that this program or partnership would greatly benefit and hopefully help grow those enrollment numbers in our classes. Then, you want to explain exactly what the partnership would entail, or?
Sure.
Okay.
So Joel Rieken is our General Manager of Advanced Materials and Equipment, and he kind of piggybacked this idea off a GE additive, which is based out of Cincinnati, whose goal is by 2020 to have 3D printers in all of their schools. And these are plastic 3D printers, so they only print plastic and use plastic material. So we piggybacked off that idea and wanted to start local, bringing us here to Speedway High School, and seeing what opportunities you guys had where we could step in and build off those and provide you with 3D printers to use within your classrooms here at the high school. So after a meeting with Eric and hearing his classes and seeing the laboratory or the lab where we will be placing the printers, we've kind of gauged that three would be a good start. We would like the partnership to include visits from our engineers, kind of like luncheon learns. Engineers could also step in and work with projects specifically from Eric's classes, and then having the students come to our facilities and see the printers in action. Because not only do we utilize plastic, but we also utilize metal printers. So a lot of our prototypes are created out of plastic, and then we print them in metal. And that metal is used in the aviation industry, automotive industry, even the medical industry. So we saw a great opportunity at Speedway High School and with Eric's classes, and Joel's the real seller on the speaking point, so he's in Germany right now, so I'm filling in for him. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but like I said, we're excited to partner with you guys and see how, you know, we can grow the interest in additive manufacturing and 3D printing and modeling, because it opens a wide range of jobs and careers, you know, from straight out of high school to with a college degree. So we're starting at the high school level and hoping to build that interest up to carry their future careers.
I have a lot of questions, but you guys have any?
I'll just sum up a little. Both of these two are pretty modest in what they just said, but in essence, what Praxair is going to be doing is coming in to our back room in our lab area. It's about a, what, 14 by 14, 14 by 16 room, and they're basically going to turn it into a Praxair lab. They're going to be installing three 3D printers along with all the software and workspace that our students need, that then Eric and our other teachers can infuse into the technology to actually take concepts that we're currently doing on computers and kids can actually see, but now we actually get to go the full design and application and production process of actually printing those so that students can hold them in their hands. And then with that, Praxair is willing with this partnership to tie that into actually what that looks like in a real production facility. So with bringing over their engineers, as well as allowing our kids to go over and see what they're doing, allowing our kids to actually see how that could transfer into a career opportunity down the road. We're really hoping that this can be used as a showcase for other industries and businesses within our area to create partnerships where we are not only teaching our kids the skills needed for future careers, but we are actually able to expose them to what those careers look like, whether it be a student that wants to come right out of high school and go into the employment world, or if it's a student that is wanting to go on and receive some type of post-secondary degree, what those opportunities are right here in their own hometown, once they receive that degree or those certificates in some of the industries, such as what Praxair is doing right here in Speedway. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, and then I'll now open it back up for questions that you have for these two.
In a perfect world, how soon will students be working on this, and what would they -- you keep saying "concept." What could a kid think of, do, work, and eventually see? Just example, we're not going to hold you to it.
One of the things that's glaring, obviously, is the, with the EV Grand Prix, which is the electric go-kart where we take out to the track for the MSTEM Day. There are many components, switches, chain guards, all kinds of stuff, that other schools are currently using this type of technology to build these rather than try to purchase these pieces. So not only is that the design, that is becoming a real concept working piece that would benefit a project that we're already doing.
So we can win?
So we can win. We did the exhibition race last year, so.
What's Praxair getting out of this?
A community partnership and really just getting our hands involved with education and educating kids that we're right next door, we're right across from this, you know, the racetrack, and people hardly know who we are, and we're big fans of GE and what they're doing. So by educating the students in our own community, we're hoping that once they get their degrees, they're willing to come back and stay and stay in Speedway and have their careers and families here.
Part of that's because you all aren't exactly, you don't blow your horn much, so we don't know what goes on over there behind the fence. Some of that's secret, isn't it?
Yeah, a lot of confidential information, but like I said, we're in the aviation industry and we're in the aerospace, and one example that Joel let these guys in on is we, you know, manufacture metal powder, and our metal powder is in space right now because we partner with SpaceX, and a lot of that is confidential. So, but we're always looking at opportunities. We've worked with the Pacers and their STEM organization, and we're really trying to get more hands-on, especially here in Speedway.
What's your workforce here in Speedway approximately?
Right here at our headquarters, we employ about over, a little over 500 employees. But we are.
So there are jobs available for kids who graduate from high school all the way through our kids who come back from engineering degrees?
And we currently have a partnership with Ivy Tech as well. There is a technician-based, it's pretty manufacturing-oriented and aviation-driven, but kids can go to Ivy Tech and get their degree and take a couple of training classes that can introduce them to what we do, and it's a good transition into our facilities for a career.
I'm a good news, bad news guy, and it doesn't seem like there's any bad news. It seems like this is win-win-win-win-win for everybody.
Yeah, so we've kind of talked. With your approval, we're ready to get any renovations, anything that's needed for the room, get it taken, put into place. So the room's ready, and the equipment is really just, I just have to hit order, and it shows up. There will be some, obviously, legal paperwork with the agreement. We're kind of deciding if it's going to be a year-to-year contract, because then at the end of the school year, do we reevaluate? Did you have enough supplies? Was it successful enough? How can we improve? What more can we do? And same thing with the cost perspective, because we're willing to provide all the fulfillment for the printers, any additional software. So if Eric comes to us and says, you know, the software is really not up to par with our architecture class in construction, what other softwares are out there that can benefit the students and really, you know, become more hands-on for this class? We're completely open to finding the correct software for him, because we don't want this to be, you know, we don't want to fall short. We want it to be successful. So whatever the students need, we're willing to work with Eric and Speedway High School to make sure it's a good experience, because that's what's going to encourage them to continue on after high school, is what they learn here, they're going to want to do more. And we have the Ambition Grant that actually has colleges applying for a grant from us to provide them with metal powders. So in high school, they're working with plastic, but by the time they get to college, they're able to work with the metal applications, you know, but that interest started somewhere, and a lot of times it's in high school.
Keith Chambers, do you know Keith Chambers?
No, I do not.
One of the things where, part of the reason we asked, we realize that this is a great amount of enthusiasm, and what I'm really looking from you as a board was just kind of a nod, go ahead, move forward, but not, what we want to do is use the next 30 days or so to get, whether it's a memorandum of understanding, you know, and legal agreements on hold harmless, you know, what, they need certain things when they come into us, and we need things. So if we can have counsel, what we'd like, I think in a perfect world, we'd have some type of a memo of understanding and agreement between us, we're not, and we'd have it legally reviewed to know if there's any, you know, liability or whatever it might be, because we're going to be responsible for our kids, and we're going to be responsible for Mr. Roseborough, and we're going to, and for me, the best part of this is what I want you to, it's easy to, for you all, it's easy to fulfill the printers in the program.
Yes.
Because like you say, that's not an expense, it's outside, it's an expense maybe outside of us right now, but for you, the real proof comes in, when you ask me to evaluate this, how many times did your people come in and interact with our kids? Because the relationships that are formed and that part, they're experts, they're going to be really important, and while our teacher will do a great job, it will not be as good if we don't have them. And likewise, if you really can, open the gates and let some kids in, we'll find a way to get them over there. We don't have buses, but we got a lot, we have, there are people at this table who would volunteer to drive kids over there in a minute. And I have some personal knowledge of the coatings and everything, so I have a kid who worked there.
What is in this room currently?
Right now, it's one of the project rooms that we have, just a couple old tables that we've basically used as our shop for assembling the EV Grand Prix go-kart, so.
So will you have a point? One of the things we've learned in our experience working with the 3D printers is they're twitchy, they're cantankerous, they're, you know, a little settings off, so can you provide Eric the training that he needs to, because you have to, sometimes you have to reset the whole thing?
Yeah.
It's been our experience.
But that also, one of the other things we'll want to work on during these, because you've got the space, and we've got to make sure we have enough electricity there, that we, those are our, we'll also want to work with our technology department to make sure that what we have is going to be able to connect there. You know, we don't know if Praxair is going to want a front door in so that, you know, in the middle of the night, they could get into that particular system and update it. So those, but again, in a perfect world, and we kind of lose a week next week before, because of Thanksgiving, but if we didn't have final documents, we'd like to have something that you could in concept, a white paper, and say that you could approve to go forward in December. But since, I don't see objection, fresh president, I'm going to tell them, go forth with all energy and do as much as you can.
Can I ask one other question?
Yeah.
So does, Eric, your thinking is this would fold into existing curriculum?
Absolutely, yep.
And so there again, what does it replace? I mean, is, do you feel like, I just, like, right now, if I thought some, you know, I had the best thing in the world, but I had to fold it into my existing already bell-to-bell curriculum, that would be kind of daunting, and what in the heck would I take out? And I can't even imagine what I would have to, like, have an, I'd have to add an extra day. But, so do you see that as?
We won't let him work on Saturday.
So do you see that as, you know, I mean, things can go, there's room?
Absolutely. The, it's going to replace a lot of hot glue guns and popsicle sticks.
Yeah.
Honestly, I mean, because we do a lot of stuff, but in all seriousness, we do a lot of stuff that is scale, and what do we use? We use scale materials, wood for the popsicle sticks, adhesive, blah, blah, blah. The idea would be now, instead of them trying to figure out how to cut it out of kind of makeshift items, we actually get to design it and then print these items to now assemble. And three, the classes that we already teach at are pretty much online curriculum through Ivy Tech. There are a lot of things that are already written into that program for outside technologies such as this, some schools have welders, et cetera, that that would just kind of slide right into that slot, so.
And then, then a corollary of that is, is there, is this the sort of thing, you know, how does this become the sort of thing that helps me walk out of high school and get a job? That I can list, I took these classes, and, you know, I put on my resume, that I had this, you know, Praxair thing going too, or I mean, how's, what does that look like?
And I would say it doesn't, it's not necessarily going to give you the skills necessarily to come out of high school and get a job. What we are hoping it does is get you introduced to something that'll light a spark, that'll either take you into college to pursue, whether it be an engineering degree or some other avenue, that because you were exposed to this, you now know what's out there. I think a lot of problems that our kids have is just lack of exposure. They hear the word engineering, but they really don't know what all the different fields, especially here in Speedway or locally, what that really means in terms of what they can do with that. Or even the kid that does want to come out of high school, like Ashley was talking about, you can come right out of high school, we can partner up with Ivy Tech, we can get you the training you need very quickly, and we can get you on the floor working within a short period of time if you're interested. After you go explore their facilities, they kind of explain what it is. So it's really about planting those seeds, is kind of how I look at it, to hopefully, even if somebody goes to college and they start out somewhere else and then they don't, they decide very quickly they don't like that, maybe that's something they revert back to, and hey, that, I was kind of interested in that in high school, maybe I'll go do this.
But a portion of your workforce is enrolled in Ivy Tech and computer-aided design and machining, so it's not unreasonable, think a student with this kind of background might go straight onto the floor and learn and grow at the same time?
Yes, I mean, and there are employees on our production floor that right now who have come straight out of high school, and I mean, we offer very strict and hands-on training, so even if, you know, they haven't had that four-year degree of, you know, all that additional exposure, at least what they had in high school is a start, and we can build off of that.
I think, in addition to this, because the question is, how does this help a high school student in the job force? It's kind of the original question. The three classes that we do offer currently, we do actually have cert, industry-recognized certifications that you can get through that course. So how does this play into what we do? Well, it's not so much a direct relation other than the fact it's growing our program. Last year, we had seven in our intro class, which you have to take intro, just like a prerequisite in any college class. This year, we have 12 with the help of the EV Grand Prix drawing interest. This would be something to grow interest to kind of get more of those kids in a position to get those certifications that we as a high school could offer, or earn your dual credits and do through Ivy Tech, et cetera. So it's maybe not a direct relation in terms of that, but it's kind of a snowball effect, I think.
Be a nice problem to have too many kids and not enough space, wouldn't it?
Exactly.
I don't know, be careful, be careful what we say.
Yes, thank you to everyone who's done that. And one of the things that's important, and I do think it probably, I'm looking at Luke now, this probably offers a good career pathway towards graduation and that.
It does. That is another aspect that we're looking at, of creating as many opportunities for kids within those CTE pathways as we can with our existing staff and classes that we offer.
One thing I will tell you is that we always invite people, you're willing to stay to see the excitement of the rest of the meeting if you so choose, but I would tell you the temperature is dropping, and this is your opportunity to go home without any reservation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we, we'll let them go forward, we'll be working on understandings, agreements, to tie it up formally, but no reservations now, we're probably not looking at too many injuries for them. Make no mistake, Eric Roseborough kind of was made, has made that connection with Praxair and brought them to us and us to them, so he did a nice job, and actually, he and Luke convinced the assistant superintendents this was worthy of your attention about a week ago, so that was great.
Number five, approve 2019 salaries and benefits for non-teaching groups of employees.
And you've had the complete list of salaries, and the recommended salaries are highlighted in yellow, and I would recommend that you adopt these salaries for 2019. By doing so, in November, you give us the opportunity to issue contracts and put things together, and to increase the retirement contributions at the assistant superintendent level at the high end, as was recommended.
Laura?
I move that we approve the 2019 salaries and benefits for the non-teaching group of employees.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item number six, approve the 2017-2018 evaluation of the superintendent.
And my recommendation is that you approve my recommendation, or my evaluation, that you did, so you pulled it all together, but the recommendation, approve it, and you can approve it by vote, or you can simply approve it by signing it, but either way, there is a formal signature.
I move that we approve by vote and signature the 2017-18 evaluation of the superintendent.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item number six, approve the 2017-2018 evaluation of the superintendent.
And my recommendation is that you approve my recommendation, or my evaluation, that you did, so you pulled it all together, but the recommendation, approve it, and you can approve it by vote, or you can simply approve it by signing it, but either way, there is a formal signature.
I move that we approve by vote and signature the 2017-18 evaluation of the superintendent.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Passes 5-0.
Okay. You have fulfilled a key responsibility as board members on the checklist of the ISBA now.
Whoa, whoa!
Thank you. I will say this as you sign, I know this is no small thing, I know it takes a great deal of time, and I always say time's the most important and valuable commodity, so thank you for taking the time to do this, and frankly, you would have had every reason in the world not to this year, but you have, and I appreciate that. So, great. Thank you. Please fold it over before you give it to the end of the table, they're dangerous people down there.
Where's my, oh, that's right, that's what it is, okay.
Yeah, yeah, well, you're going to earn your pay over the next month, hopefully.
Item number seven, discuss draft of suicide awareness and prevention policy.
Background, in October, the School Boards Association reminded us that we had to have a policy regarding suicide awareness and prevention. You see, they did a nice job of outlining the background and the guidance, which I included. I've simply, as I often do, provided a starting point in a draft. In the past, we've looked at this, or you've had the opportunity to read it, and then quite frankly, you've assigned the responsibility of working with me on this to Mr. Gay, and we trade some email and look at some edits, and her background makes it pretty easy, we can, we can start on this, we can, frankly, with her expertise, if we don't like this one, we can start over. I will tell you that the one that came from the School Boards Association was six pages long, and we don't have a policy six pages long. I attempted to meet the criteria of the policy here as a starting point, so any input you'd like to have, we'd welcome, but if we follow typical procedure, Dr. DeGaye, I'll say that because of her law degree now, and I will work on this over the next month and hopefully bring back a better version to you in December, and then if you're inclined to pass it then, great, if there's some editing, we've got plenty of time to work on that. Didn't use the red book when I was looking at this, but I will get better. Any questions? Please don't hesitate to write me an email, write Laura an email with things that we know, because I always kid her and say she'll earn her pay on that.
Thank you both for your efforts on that. Item number seven, or number eight, discuss Speedway High School Gymnasium Heating, Air Conditioning, and Ventilation.
And on a night when it's, you know, 19 degrees, this is, but if... And on a night when it's, you know, 19 degrees, this is, but if, if you were in the gymnasium, because the start of school is moved to the first of August, we have a, we have a high school varsity contest in the gymnasium. Most specifically, this is volleyball in the fall, and some of the use. We, we, we don't even have class in the gym in August because it's warm in there, we, but we have a new gym that's air-conditioned. When we built a new gym in 2003, we air-conditioned it. Our gym, I think, is the only varsity competition gym in Marion County that's not air-conditioned, but I can't say that for sure, because I, I just know the ones I go to. And I think it may be time to consider that. Now, we've done some, some preliminary work on that, and the first engineers want us to essentially replace the air conditioning system for the whole building and the air handlers. Well, the air handlers up there are original. The problem is, the air handling in the gymnasium, and I almost thought about taking a walk out and looking at this, are above the ceiling. And if you run air conditioning through the existing unit and start putting cold air up there, it's going to condense. They're not insulated, and we'd have, well, to do that, we'd have to take the ceiling down, we'd have to replace the, the vents that are up there, as long as the, million and a half dollars, how about that? Low estimate, million and a half dollars shocked me. Okay? So we went back and said, what if we put an independent air conditioning system in, in which we dropped the new tubes, if you will, the ventilation tubes, below the ceiling, and put them on the two separate units on the north side of the building, through the walls on the north side, above the second-floor classrooms? And we think that rough estimate sets anywhere from about $280,000 to $400,000. Much more palatable. The second thing it does is it means if, if, if we ever lost air conditioning to the building, we could still actually air condition that gym and bring air out. That's not going to, and so consequently, I think it might be a reasonable project undertake. We will have in our rainy day fund, which we have used as a bank account to save for construction, about $400, $460,000, maybe a little less than that by the time. Well, what had, need to happen is, is if you all said yes, explore this, we'd have you pass an additional appropriation in January. We would then take that to the town council for, we'd just present it in February, they might take action in March. They've, they've, they've always, to this date, supported that. We'd then turn it over to the DLGF. By about April, we'd know if they give us, gave us permission to do this, and we could go on the street to get, to get bids to possibly do that. So I say all of that as being a fine and reasonable project that may be worthy of consideration, or at least beginning to look at. How does it begin? It begins by hiring Stare and Associates for about $56,000, Kyle.
Twenty-one-five.
Twenty-one-five, that's better, better, to actually draw the plans and begin to work on that. But I'm not even asking for that at this point, because I want you to understand that I think that's a reasonable thing to look at. But I also want you to balance that against, I do believe in the future, the school district is in addition to Newby Elementary School, of two classrooms and additional restrooms. And, and as we had talked about, I can show you enrollment on that building that goes anywhere from, from, lower than, today it's 220, it was 212 at its highest point, down all the way to 160. And I can't show you a pattern, because it failed me this year. Well, it's the only one that didn't fail me, the rest of them failed me. But there is a part of me, right now, we have every room filled, we have class in the teacher workroom. Okay? We are, we are going to the restrooms in shifts. Okay? If, if we have, if we have a sewer line backup like we did at that building four years ago, we're not going to school, because we don't have the second set of bathrooms. But I think genuinely, genuinely, that's a million and a half dollar project. We don't have a million and a half dollars in the bank, but we have $400,000, which could be the start of that, if we, if we tended to go in that direction. We'd still have a bond issue, we, the way you'd have to finance that. Or you could say, I want to make sure you give all options here, we could say that's a project three years down the road, and we could build our referendum fund and transfer money into Rainy Day, and we could get pretty close, because that's what we did with Wheeler. When we added Wheeler, we funded that dude out of capital projects and Rainy Day savings. So with a three-year plan, we could probably have the money to do Newby outright. I probably would suggest to you that we have no debt in the school corporation, we could go on the market, we could sell a million and a half dollars in debt and pay it off anywhere from two to four years without any issue. But if we, if we would choose, not choose, essentially if we do nothing, we essentially have $400,000 towards Newby in the bank. If we choose to air condition the high school gym, then we don't have that as the down payment. And the, and that, that's a pretty hard balance there, because this has never been a board that spends money lightly. Although I would tell you, we can afford, we, we could, I think we could, if the bids came in right, air condition high school gym this spring. And if we wanted to, we could concurrently go on the market and start to look at what Newby would, would cost for a million and a half dollar bond issue, and we could pay that back in anywhere from three or four years.
If, if we were to consider the bond issue, do we, what's the process for approval?
Okay.
I wasn't around the last time we did a bond issue.
That's, yeah, there are, here, Indiana has, in the case of a one and a half million dollar to $2 million, in fact, in this school corporation, anything up to $5 million, the board, school board votes and it's done. Because that's now considered a small amount of money to bond.
Okay.
As opposed, what we can essentially do, Bill, is up to 5% of our AV, which is about $650 million, so 5% of, we can bond 3.75 million without, we wouldn't even need a 10-28 hearing. It's just not seen as that big of an amount. Now, to give you an idea of paying it back, two-year payback on a million and a half dollars is going to be 10 cents on, 10 cents on the tax rate is going to generate, two and a half years, three years, 8 cents or 9 cents on the tax rate. And we have zero, because we have no debt. So, so because we have no debt, we're, and we're so clean, we can do it on the board's initiative. Now, the process would be, once we approved, we'd say we're going to do it, we'd have to hire our architect, draw the plans, put the project out for bid. As soon as we had an idea of what the bid was, we would go to bond counsel and a bonding company, generally that's either Stiefel or Umbah, sell the bonds. The last time we sold bonds was for the new windows and redoing the heating, ventilation, air in this building. The interest on the bond was 0.89%. You could almost, we, we had to worry about holding the money in arbitrage, we couldn't keep it. But they wouldn't be that low now.
No.
We, I, I'm guessing we'd be under 5%, but how far under primes it to, didn't mean there?
Is there a reason why we wouldn't combine both jobs in the same bond issue?
They, they honestly, both could be one bond issue for $2 million, and keep the $400 in the rainy day fund for other options. One of the things that's really been hard over the last 15 years is, we used to be able to generate about $3 million in capital projects a year before property tax caps, and that would always give us the ability to replace roofs, to replace parking lots. But now we're down to generating about $1 million a year. So we have to long-range plan those kind of things. Roofs are in pretty good shape right now, but parking lots are going to need to be redone. We do have in our capital projects planned, the air conditioning upgrade at Wheeler, which will, the only school that doesn't have the air conditioning upgrade, I mean, we, we would look at Newby in two years, but if we were going to do this addition, we'd do the air conditioning at that time as a part of it. There, there are a lot, and I'm always, as soon as you say bond issue in construction, the, the list of needs grows quickly, and mostly it's wants. And so I, I tend to want to be pretty focused on, you know, if we want to do, but what we get in scale is, if we did an air conditioning project in an addition, and we were able to scale that to one company, we'd probably get a better price on both. Depends on the vendor. Probably. But my discussion is, is today, do you, do you want us to pursue at least a $21,000 purchase to get a, a better drawing of what that air conditioning would look like? And if we wanted to go out to bid, be ready to do that. That's really what I'm, I'm trying to say, is that the least thing. And I, and I do, it's really important, and I, I would really be willing to suspend the meeting, because I want you to understand that we'd go out to the main gym, and you've all seen ventilation ducts that come through. We would, I would suspect, we would hang those about even with the walk, the, the second, call it for like, the balcony walkway, where you blow air down to the gym and into, down onto the floor. So, but by having those air ducts over that far, you'd never be in the way of a volleyball game, or a, you know, a basketball game or something. But they would be hanging out there, and that's a finished ceiling. And I haven't even thought about what, you know, frankly, if you were in there doing that, you'd also do LED lights. Save enter, I mean, you know, and, and the gain you'd have there is, you'd want to put lights in and make sure the ducks doesn't, the ducks don't block the light. But I, you know, LED lights are going to save some money, it's an expensive thing, but nothing like the cost of this. I guess what it really comes down to is, if you've been to the volleyball game in August, you understand what it's like. What you try to do is sit down here on this corner, where we put a big barrel fan and blow air out of the hallway, and attempt to cool four people while the other 300 suffer. It's pretty tough in there. So this is, as you think about it, and you think about questions, what I, I guess I would like to suggest is, for December, and perhaps during even retreat, this might be a reasonable thing to talk about, but I'd want to charge the assistant superintendent of operations, Dr. Trebley, to maybe come up with a white paper on this, more detailed about what we think it would cost, what the timeframe would be, that, looking at that. And then also, we'd work on, and I'd definitely work on this with them, a white paper on what it would take and what might be an ideal thing to do for Newby. Now, in the back of your packet today, I ca, if Newby grows 40 kids next year, it can't hold it. So I want you to know that for $100,000, we can put a trailer behind it and put bathrooms back there. And if we know that's coming, we can afford that. That would be another thing we could, I mean, we just, we just don't have any more classrooms left in Newby. Or, how about this? Would you like to redistrict and move the boundary lines? That's always a pleasant thing. Yeah, I think we'd find a way to.
Yeah, we'd find something.
But, but about $100,000 would be what it would take to have two classrooms with individual restrooms, just like we had at Wheeler for about four years. But a little less money, because it's in a, it's already on blacktop, and we've already got sewer lines and electricity right out there. I'm seeing you nod, which means bring forth a little more detail in December.
More information.
Do you want that?
In fact, I don't know if you could make an exploratory call to the bond issuance, to see what kind of interest rate they would give.
We can do that. That is, that is, that is a good thing to do, to just, and we'll ask, we'll ask them to review our, and the other good news is, because we finally got audited and are up to date, and our audits were in good shape, they could issue us money. One of the things that we're holding up school corporations is they were three and four years behind on audits.
Right.
Dr. Trebley, you think Stiefel could do that for us, or Umbah?
Absolutely.
I don't know that the rate would change, but it might be worth investigating what it would be up to $2 million to be able to do both jobs on that.
Absolutely. More information's always better for us.
Sure.
Great. Where are we in the referendum cycle?
We are, the, the next referendum would come forth on, in 2023. That would be seven years from '16. That'll be a municipal election, and I would, I think we ought to do it in the primary, if it's still available at that time, in May. We've, we've done that now, that'll be the third cycle. But that's always a good thing to think about, because you know, if, if we could get a bond issue out and pay it off by the time we come back to referendum, one of the things we could do is balance, we could drop the referendum rate down a little bit, because we wouldn't be saving for that, which would offset that. And that's exactly the same logic we used last time. So that's not a, not a brainstorm. But we could also have that fall off at the time, we'd be looking at, at tax rate. Be a, be a good timing thing. I'll tell you what, I'll do a little work on that, on timings and rates and that kind of thing. It might be in our best interest to get going on this in the spring.
Yep.
Spring of '19, on the market 20, payoff 21, 22, if we were aggressive, and have it dropping off right before. I'll look, I'll look at that.
Anything else on this? Item number nine, reaffirm statement of board ethics.
This is, again, a school board's expectation of you, if, if you want to get in the good standing of their recognition. I've always done this because of that reason, I've never had any question about the ethics of this board. I, I think that everything here is exactly what you've always stood for, from the day I came here. And, but I would recommend you reaffirm these ethics, because it is what you do.
Should all stand and hands over heart? I pledge to reaffirm. I'm feeling it.
Motion to reaffirm the statement of the board of ethics. Thank you, Debbie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Laura. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of reaffirming our statement of board of ethics?
Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0. Item number 10, acknowledgement of grants received.
And I'd recommend that by consensus, you accept $198,024 and 2 cents in, in grants and gifts to the school corporation. It's a large number, but remember, it's been five weeks between meetings.
Thank you. Item number 11, personnel report.
Mr. Disney, he's down there. Has he spoken tonight?
I don't know. We have, on the personnel report tonight, we have four resignations, and then we have four people we would like to hire. Resignations are Joseph Ross, who's been a longtime field supervisor of maintenance for us, Cody LaFave, who's been a short-time custodian for us, very short time, Michelle Mulligan, who worked as a cafeteria, Chuck Harvey, who was our football coach at Junior High School for several years. Those are the resignations. And in the employment side of it, Barbara Cassing, we'd like to hire her to take over a returning lead for Angie Lawrence. That'll start on November 26th.
On or about, and that's a temporary teaching contract.
Terry Spurling is a custodian, Caitlin Gregory as head softball coach at Speedway High School, and Connie Harris as a high school assistant swim coach. Questions I've asked that you approve, the personnel report is presented.
Tom?
I'll move that we accept the personnel report as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the personnel report. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Recognition of visitors and other business.
See no visitors, and I have no other business for the board.
Item number 13, we approve Clayton.